Well, welcome to the Select Board for Monday, January 25th at 5:30. All meetings of the Select Board are recorded except Executive Session. Date of the meeting, January 25th pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Baker's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Office of the Attorney General's webpage. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. And all meetings of the Select Board are recorded. In attendance tonight, all remote is myself, Doug Moguln, Joe Dede, Russ Fox, Chief Administrative Officer Carl Steinhardt, and Select Board Secretary Robin Solek. If we learned anything at the Mass Municipal last week was that that's now a requirement at the beginning of a meeting that you have to roll call out the people that are board members that are attending the meeting remotely have to be roll called in attendance. So first, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Who wants to do that tonight? Liz Bennett? If you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
And before we get into public comments and... Mr. Fox?
Chairman, I have learned today that of the passing of former Economic Development Commissioner Ginny Tipowitz, and I had the pleasure of working with Ginny. She was an outstanding person who served her town very well, and it is a very sad day. She was just a wonderful person. So if we could please have a moment of silence for Ginny Tipowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take any public comments. If anybody has any comments that they'd like to bring to the attention of the Select Board, now is your opportunity. If you could... It looks like we might have some public comment tonight. So if you have a comment that you'd like to address the Board, if you could state your name and address, and we'll take your comments.
How do you do this?
I'm sorry?
Oh, is he on it?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you, Doug.
No, this is Tim Garrish from 17 Ed Holcombe Road.
Okay, Tim, the floor is yours.
I've known the Langens for quite some time. I've been at their residence countless times, been around both of their dogs.
Is this regarding... Hold on, Tim, is this regarding the hearing that's coming up at 5:40?
Yes. I thought it was 5:30.
5:40. So can you bear with us for a couple of minutes?
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else have any public comments to the Select Board tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fox?
I'd like to make a public comment if I could. I'm going to step away from the Board for a second, and I'd like to speak as a Board Member of the Southwick Recreation Center. This past week, the Town of Southwick got a phone call concerning the condition of the flag at the Rec Center, and I think some people are in the mistake and belief that the Southwick Rec Center is actually part of the Town of Southwick. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize for the condition of the flag. We buy one flag annually. It costs us about $85, and we have it raised all year long, and it is lit at night. So we have taken down the flag, and the only other thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is I hope people realize that the Rec Center has very limited income coming in, and sometimes we have no income coming in, but a lot of bills and money going out. So if there's anyone out there that would like to donate a flag, we certainly would appreciate it since we're in a very tight situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Does anyone else have a comment for the Select Board this evening? Okay, we will move on. So first order of business is to acknowledge payables warrant 2118B dated January 11th in the amount of $3,000,230,633.22. Payroll warrant 2116 dated January 19th, 2021 in the amount of $224,223.18. Acknowledge special warrant 2117 dated January 21st, '21 in the amount of $182.61. And if I can get a motion for both the open session and executive session minutes of January 11th, please.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry.
That's all right. Doug Moguln, I...
Russ Fox, I.
Joe Dede, I.
Fantastic. All right, are we close enough? I think we're... Are we close enough to the 5:40, Carl?
Yeah, you can just start reading all of the...
Yeah, that's gonna take half an hour.
As well as your steps in the holding of the hearing.
Okay. And I'll go on record, and I'm sure the other selectmen will nod their head. This is the most unpleasant part of being a selectman in the Town of Southwick is a bloody dog hearing. So this hearing steps are that we have to have a motion to open the hearing. Do I have said motion?
Yes. Joe Dede will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
We need a roll call vote. Doug Moguln, I.
Joe Dede, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Great. So... Is this the dog hearing, Monday, January 25th at 5:40 concerning dogs owned by Jennifer and Sean Langen and housed at 102 Mort Vining Road? Nature of complaint, alleged violation Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 157 concerning vicious dogs nuisance, unlicensed and unvaccinated dogs at large attacks on other dogs and people, and Southwick Town Code Chapter 69, Sections 3, 5, 11, 12, and 16 are included. Co-complaintants are Ms. Erica Emmelman of 81 Mort Vining Road, Southwick, Mass, and Lizanne Bennett, ACO, Town of Southwick Select Board. Okay, at this point, do we have... Make sure I got this right. Jennifer and Sean Langen on the line here?
You do.
Okay, and do we have Erica Emmelman on the line as well?
Yes.
Okay, and I know we have Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
So Carl, who swears these people in?
You do.
Fantastic. If you could raise your right hand, please. And that you swear to tell the whole truth and testify honestly during this hearing.
I do.
Put a vote or Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think you need to swear in all the witnesses also, sir.
Okay. Do we have those... A list of who those witnesses are at this point? Or should we do that as we go through?
I would imagine if anybody's going to speak to being a witness on the incidents, then you would ask them to come forward now, identify themselves, make a list next to on your complaint form there, and then swear them in as a group, Mr. Chairman.
And I thank everyone for bearing with us as we make history in the Town of Southwick by having our first remote dangerous dog hearing. So is there anyone on this call here today that's going to be a witness or giving testimony during this hearing? If so, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Wendy Mello.
I'm sorry, one at a time.
Wendy Mello. 25 Davis Road.
Tryon Cody. For Arcadia Lane.
Tim, now's your chance.
Carleen Langen, 102 Mort Vining Road.
Are these witnesses to the actual incident or witnesses to speak on the Langens' behalf regarding their dog?
Let's err on the side of caution, Tim. What's your last name?
Garrish.
Two Rs?
Yep, G-E-R-R-I-S-H.
Thank you. And your address, sir?
17 Ed Holcombe Road.
Okay.
Pauline Sokovich. 86 Ridgecrest Westfield.
Okay. Anyone else? Somebody is talking. It says iPhone, and I think you're muted.
That's my aunt. I don't think they know how to do it. Can I...
Sorry. I know how to do it. Lori Leclaire, 6 Ridge U-Terris. The link's not working. They won't let me in on my link on my computer. So I'm just... That's why I'm on this phone on.
And could you spell your last name, please?
L-E, capital C-L-A-I-R.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, there is one of our neighbors trying to get on the call and is not allowed to get on with the link. Is there any way you can let them on?
Do you know their name?
Yep, RJ McGivney.
He's in now.
Thank you.
Um, I would also like to be a witness. And it's Ailish McGivney.
And your address?
Address is 75 Mort Vining Road.
Still waiting for RJ to connect there, I think. Liz, do you have any other witnesses that are dialing in tonight?
No.
Did you get Tryon Cody?
I sure did, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
And then there was Marissa Langen and 102 Mort Vining Road.
There may possibly be an Alexandra Mellow as well.
Okay. RJ, are you in now?
I am, Doug. Thank you.
And is your address the same as Ailish McGivney?
You got it, yep.
Lucky guess. Okay, so all of you who have... I got, let's see.
One more person coming on, Alexandra Mellow. She is not on yet, but she is trying to get on.
Okay. And somebody's saying that the audio is not working. But I have you at 4 Ham Hill. And if we... Long time no see. How are you? Okay, so all I have Wendy Mellow, Tryon Cody, Tim Garrish, can't read my own writing, Harley, Pauline Sokovich, Lori Leclaire, RJ McGivney, Ailish McGivney, Marissa Langen, and the Coon family over there from Ham Hill. If you could all raise your hand and swear that you'll tell the truth and speak truthfully during this hearing this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, everyone's sworn in, Carl, and under oath. And now the Animal Control Officer makes a statement regarding the violation of Mass General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, and Town of Southwick, Chapter 69, subsection 16, included but not limited to dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs.
All right, do you want me to read the report?
I don't know if you have to read the report in its entirety, or we can share it here, or you can give us the general summary, and we can take questions from there.
Yeah. Okay, um, well, on 11/17/20, the Southwick Department of Police Services responded to a complaint of two dogs attacking a dog walker, and the two dogs she was walking resulting in injury to one of the dogs and the dog walker on Mort Vining Road. Victim was identified as Rebecca Millick, and the victim dog, one of the two that Millick was walking, belonged to Erica Emmelman. The offending dogs belonged to Jennifer and Sean Langen. During that incident, the Langen dogs, Theo and Marley, both German Shepherds, left a Langen property, crossed the road, and one or both attacked one of the dogs belonging to Emmelman, and also bit the dog walker Mahalik, causing injury to her hand. Emmelman's dog, Trixie, a Labrador Retriever mix, received bites to the abdomen and required medical treatment. All right, and speaking with Emmelman, she hired Rebecca to walk her dogs, since the normal procedure due to past incidents was that... I'm sorry, what? Was that she would text Emmelman to let her know that she was taking the dogs out for a walk, and Ms. Emmelman would then text a neighbor, Jennifer Langen, to let her know that... To keep Langen's dogs inside. So it was a whole system that they had set up, which was wonderful. During this incident, however, Emmelman stated she did not receive the text from Mahalik because she was down at the barn with the horses. She did not see... Mahalik did not see that the Langen's dogs outside only barking from inside the house, so she decided to walk past the house, something she only does if she knows the dogs are not outside. Mahalik said that when she does walk the dogs past a Langen home, she make her that she is on the opposite side of the roadway to avoid issue. Mahalik stated when she was just passing Langen home, Langen was letting the dogs out, they ran out across the street, attacked Mahalik and the dogs. Mahalik said she started screaming in an attempt to get between the dogs. Mahalik said that she was terrified, could not say if one or both Langen's dogs was involved in the attack, but that she did see or hear Ms. Langen screaming, "Come back here." Both dogs returned to the house. Mahalik said that she screamed at Langen, "Why does it keep happening?" Langen apologized. Mahalik said the UPS driver, who had witnessed the incident, came up to check on her, found that... And then she found it was to her hands, and then later was found she had bite mark bruising on her leg. Mahalik said she got the dogs back to Emmelman's house, and she checked them over, finding puncture wounds on Trixie, the Labrador mix's abdomen. Mahalik said she advised Emmelman that the dog was brought to Sandbrook Vet Hospital, got treated for the wounds, said it's not the first time the Langen's dogs have attacked Emmelman's dog. Mahalik said that the Langens have an electric fence, but that the dogs ignore it. In my conversation with Jennifer Langen subsequent to this incident, she repeatedly stated that if Mahalik wasn't screaming during the incident, she, Langen, could have called the dogs back quicker and denied that her dog bit Mahalik, saying that it was alleged. At no time during our conversation did Langen accept responsibility for the actions of her dogs. Langen stated she knew one of the dogs was passed due on license and Theo on his rabies vaccination. Langen stated that Theo, one of the German Shepherds, snuck out of the house, and that they have had past interactions with her. Langen said that we have German Shepherds, and they're pretty protective. Langen stated approximately four weeks ago, the dog walker, Mahalik, was yelling at Langen's dog while they... The dogs were in Langen's yard. Langen stated the dog walker seems to be afraid of the dog, and that she was yelling at Langen's at the time, and that Langen did not feel it was appropriate for the walker to be yelling at the dogs were in their yard. Should be noted that Mahalik is a professional dog sitter, having been involved with us for over 10 years, running her own company, and Mahalik has been walking Emmelman's dogs for over a year. Langen said she felt that if the dog walker was not screaming, she, Langen, probably could have gotten the dogs back faster. Langen fully disputed that the bite from her dogs occurred, stating that the dog washer was thrashing around with two dogs on leashes. She did not feel the bites happen from her dogs. Langen referred to the incident as alleged, and when, however, she was advised that it was being taken as a dog bite, and as such, her dogs were supposed to be in quarantine. It was issued as a citation for the two counts of licensed dog, unvaccinated, and dog at large. Let's see. During a subsequent telephone conversation with the owner of the victim dog, Erica Emmelman, she reported that this is not the first incident involving these dogs owned by Jennifer and Sean Langen. Emmelman stated that the first incident was in 2017, wherein her daughter, at the time, seven years old, had gone over to the Langen home to be babysat by the Langen's daughter. Upon entering the home, one of the Langen's dogs, a German Shepherd named Theo, lunged out and bit Emmelman's daughter on the arm. The dog ripped open Emmelman's daughter's jacket and punctured the skin in the child's upper arm and shoulder. The Langen's daughter was able to pull the dog off of Emmelman's dog. Emmelman stated that she did not report the incident because she and Langen were friends, and because the jacket protected her daughter from more serious wounds. Emmelman stated that the second incident was on 11/11/19, wherein both the Langen's dogs, Theo and the other German Shepherd, Marley, attacked Emmelman's dog while Rebecca Mahalik, the dog's walker, was with them on Nicholson Hill Road. Emmelman's dog, Trixie, a Labrador mix, required surgery and a veterinary stay as a result of the injuries sustained. Again, Emmelman stated that this was not reported because she didn't wish to harm the friendship with Langen. Emmelman said the third incident was a verbal altercation between Rebecca Mahalik and Jennifer Langen. During that incident, Emmelman stated that Jennifer Langen was outside with the dogs. And when Mahalik was walking Emmelman's dogs past the residence, both dogs charged out, but did not enter the roadway. The end result was a verbal altercation. Emmelman said that the fourth incident was on 11/17/20, when the Langen dogs left the properties, crossed the road, and attacked Emmelman's dogs, causing injury to one and also biting Mahalik. Pictures were provided regarding the different incidents. Emmelman stated that after this incident, she was no longer interested in keeping peace between neighbors because she felt that the Langens were not taking the issue seriously. Emmelman stated that after each incident, Sean Langen would call her and say, "If I was home, this would never have happened." But then he never made an attempt to cover any bills, or even after offering apology after the incident. Emmelman stated that it appeared to her that neither he, Sean, or Jennifer Langen felt the attacks were their fault or responsibility. Emmelman also stated there had been an incident with a young man visiting the Langen house during which Theo bit the young man in the leg. However, the young man has keys in his pocket, and they received the brunt of the bite causing damage to the keys. She didn't know who this young man was, though. Um, let's see. 12/1, after the quarantine period had ended for the Langen dogs, I spoke with Sean Langen, who stated that he had had trainer Kathy Lemay to his home on 11/27 due to an assessment of the dogs. She noted that this wasn't a violation of the quarantine order, as it did not expire until 11/28, and that the Langens had full knowledge of the stipulations set forth in this quarantine order. I spoke with Lemay, who said that she did go to the home, and however, she had not been advised by Langen that the dogs were still under quarantine. Lemay stated that when she saw Theo, one of the German Shepherds, she noted that the dog had a snotty nose, so she did not physically touch the dog. Lemay stated that she advised Langen to get the dog checked by a veterinarian immediately. Lemay stated that Langen told her the dog had never had a snotty nose, and that he did not think it was a big deal. Lemay stated that when she was adamant with Langen telling him that it was serious and that if left untreated, it could potentially lead to pneumonia and death of the dog. Lemay stated that during the initial interview, both the Langens were stating what they felt the dog walker was doing wrong, and that what she, the dog walker, was doing was prompting the dogs to be aggressive. Lemay stated she told the Langens that it was their responsibility to keep their dogs under control at all times, and that it was not the dog's walker's fault at any level. Lemay stated that every time the Langens tried to reiterate their beliefs about the dog walker being at fault, Lemay would repeat that it was their responsibility to control their own dogs. Lemay stated that while she was observing the dogs, specifically Theo, as he was believed to be the aggressor, she stated that the dogs needed a lot of correction, and the owners are not providing it. Lemay stated that she had heard this particular dog can be hinky around people. Lemay was asked if she felt the other dogs following Theo's lead, and she stated that she did. Lemay further stated that Emmelman, whom she met after the last incident, had offered to pay for training for the Langen dogs, but that Langen kept making excuses as to why he was not able to make the dates for training. Lemay stated that after multiple attempts to set up training with Langen, she gave up. Lemay stated that she wants to see the yard physically fenced in, as the electric fencing was obviously not enough, and she wants to have at least a minimum of three lessons with the dogs, one per week, and wants to see progress made to feel there is at least an effort being made by the Langens to control the dogs. Lemay stated she would keep me updated. In speaking with Langen on 12/9, he was asked why he did not have the dog checked for the nasal discharge when he was advised to do so, and he stated that the dog always gets that. Langen was asked if Theo had been vaccinated. He stated the veterinarian at the Tractor Supply Clinic didn't show up, and Langen was asked why he did not take the dog to an emergency hospital. He said he hadn't thought of that. Langen was asked why, when the dog became ill, he did not contact his vet immediately as the dog was still under quarantine. He stated that he thought it was after the quarantine period that the dog became ill. Langen was asked why the other dog was still unlicensed. He said he didn't know that this dog's rabies vaccination had not yet expired. In speaking with Lemay on 12/10, she stated that Langen did not... Did contact her the week, but that he had not gotten the dog checked for this snotty nose. He not made another training appointment. Um, and I know I followed up with her after that, and he still had not... It just seemed that he just wasn't... Or neither of the Langens were taking it very seriously. So in concluding all of this, I'm not confident that the Langens would follow through with what they've been asked to do in order to avoid this to happen again. And I'm leaving it up to the Board at this point for your help and assistance. I have seen no indications that anything's actually been done to try to correct any of this.
I can add to you how to speak?
And again, based on the past incidents with this dog, these dogs, I do not feel that this point... I do feel, I should say, I do feel that this point, these dogs are dangerous, and walking by the residence, you know, could potentially lead to an issue.
Sean, I'll get you in one second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And just so I'm clear, is Jennifer on the line with you as well?
Oh, yes, I am, and there's many discrepancies.
Oh, yes, I am. And there's many discrepancies in this report.
All right, I just was checking. We'll get to that part.
Many discrepancies, I'd like to, I would definitely like to.
Well, you will absolutely get your chance. I just wanted to make sure I got the right.
And I have my daughter here that was also here that day.
Okay, hang on. Jennifer, hang on. Let's follow this through the process here, okay?
My apologies.
Thank you. Okay, so the complainant has made her statement regarding alleged violations. Okay, is there anyone else from the police or witnesses to this event that are to give testimony here today? Anyone?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Okay, is there anyone? Any other party such as police from the town of Southwick or witnesses to this event? The event particularly around the on November 11th? Or 10/21 that would like to give testimony here?
My daughter is sending in a statement for me to read.
I'm sorry, say that again.
My daughter Alexandra cannot join the Zoom meeting because she's at work. So she is sending in a message for me to read for her.
I think she'd have to send that, Carl, she'd probably have to send that direct to this board, correct?
Uh, yeah, it should, you know, it would be part of a written, if it's an absolute document that relates to being a witness to one of these actual dated events, that's fine. It's, you know, it's not an issue about character, testimony or things like that.
Mayor, say something.
Uh, let's see if there's any other one else that's a witness to this event.
Um, I was a witness.
Okay, why don't we start there? Who's that?
Marissa Lang and.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Okay. The floor is yours.
The dog, um, my mom opened the door and the dog snuck out and the dog walker is walking by. And she was yelling and my mom was yelling at the dogs. They were both yelling and then he ran out and ran to the dog. And then, um, it just happened really fast. Then Theo came back and then, he came back inside and then. Oh, yeah, then the dog came back inside.
So, did you see the dog bite this young lady or?
I didn't, I did not see the dog bite. I saw him over there, but I didn't see, like, he came back very fast, so. I didn't see him bite him, bite the dog.
Okay. Was there anyone else on this meeting that was a witness to this event?
Hi, Erica Emelman. Did not invite Rebecca Milik into this chat. Nor did I invite Kathy Lemay into this chat. This happened unfortunately, and I just want to be able to walk my dogs on my street, that's all. I love the Lang and's and this isn't about bashing them and it's not about getting the entire neighborhood in any sort of defense. It's just, this continues to happen and it needs to stop. And this was my last course of action because this is the first time that there's been an altercation and I can no longer have my dogs go to the vet and have surgery and stitches and stays and pay these bills. Again, these are my neighbors and I take my neighbors very seriously, like I love them. But what am I supposed to do? My husband died five years ago and I don't have anybody to look back on. And Ruby, my German shepherd, who is trained by Kathy Lemay, whom I wanted the Lang and's to train their dog, um, who trained Ruby, I can't have her die. Because what would that do? My, and on top of it, my 11-year-old daughter is on this call. And I, and she's not supposed to be on this call. If someone can get her off of it, her name is Skylar Emelman. Um, that would be fantastic, but she's watching all of this right now. And these are all of my neighbors. The Lang and's have, have asked all of the neighbors to come on to this. And this isn't, this isn't a hearing to put down Theo. This isn't a hearing to do anything. It's a, it's a hearing to make them do something for their dogs. They need to train these dogs and they need to put in protocol to make them stop harming my dog and my children and my dog walker and whoever the hell else walks by their house.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure thing, Ms. Bennett.
Okay. The whole point of this is to try to get some sort of safety barrier between the Lang and's dogs and people that are walking by with their dogs. Um, we have documented cases of these issues, so it's not even a question of whether they happened or whether they didn't happen. They happened. It's documented. We've got it done. Um, and as I kept trying to talk to Sean about fencing, about you know, keeping the guys fenced in the back part of the house or, you know, so don't let them out the front door, that kind of thing. This is what we're trying to accomplish. Erica Emelman offered to pay for to have these dogs trained out of her own pocket. And it was declined. Um, I think at this point, something needs to be done because this is just it's, it's my lieutenant and I were discussing, he said, would you walk your dogs by the house? I said, not a shot in hell. Not a shot in hell because I would not trust that these dogs would not come out and do some damage. Did it happen? Didn't it happen? We documented cases where it did happen. We have, we are trying to help the Lang and's um, understand the seriousness of this. And blaming, blaming the dog walker for screaming is not going to get anybody anywhere. It's not going to solve a problem. And there is a problem here. It's quite obvious there is, but there are documented cases and we're not arguing whether they happen or not. We're just trying to find a solution here.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the, turn the floor over to Sean in a moment. I just want to be clear. From where I sit and what I've read, I mean, we have, and I'll let the other board members weigh in as well, but once we've gone to this level, right? Once this type of complaint has been filed and we've, we're filed to have a hearing for, for a dangerous dog, that is a specific legal finding, right? Under the, under mass general law and under the Board of Selectmen's bylaws, right? If these dogs are found dangerous. So there is conditions that can be put upon that kind of declaration, right? And it's part of part of the ACO's recommendation to this board and then the board's decision. So I just want to be clear that to the, to the person that spoke, Erica and to everyone else, this, this fuse was lit, right? So we're gonna have to follow the process to the end as far as, you know, either finding, you know, a finding of a dangerous dog or not. And then what's the recommendation from here, right? So I just want to be clear about that. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Sean.
Appreciate you hearing me. Certainly, we're dealing with a couple instances where my dog Theo bit Trixie. That no one's denying that that happened, okay? Um, I would like to ask, and just for you to take into review, all these incidents that have taken place. There were not reports filed. I'm not denying that some of this took place. And I want to deal with the root cause and the issue and I want to fix this. But I do have to ask you, if reports are not filed on any of these past instances, it seems like we can just bring up anything and everything to pile on to this one incident that happens that I do acknowledge and I do take responsibility for it. Ms. Bennett made the comment about my dog being sick and between her and the, and the dog trainer. Um, what, what a horrible person I was. I don't care about my dog. I took my dog. I was the first one in line at Tractor Supply. Once, once this issue happened and I realized that one of my dogs, not both, did not have his rabies. So I was the first one in line and as luck would have it, the um, the vet didn't show that night. So I begged the folks over at Salmon Brook to see my dog. Both to get vaccinated and also because it had been determined by somebody else that he was sick. And they saw me within a few days. The dog was vaccinated. And the doctor at Salmon Brook said, there's nothing wrong with your dog. Your dog is not sick. So, um, it's just, it's just the way this whole statement was written. And I, like I said, I take responsibility for, for what my dogs did, but the reason I think it was important, my youngest daughter had an opportunity to speak there because she was a witness. Had Ms. Bennett not refused to take a statement from my youngest daughter, she wouldn't have got the first part of her statement incorrect. Both dogs did not exit the house. One dog did, that was Theo. And again, I take responsibility for what my dog did. But when you're writing a statement, a four-page, four-page statement and you're just tearing apart my character and my family's character and that were these awful people that just let two German shepherds free range around the neighborhood, biting dogs, cats and human beings, it's just not a fair assessment. So there's that inaccuracy from Ms. Bennett. Um, had she taken the time and not refused to talk to my daughter when this happened and done, uh, taken a statement from her. That fact probably wouldn't have not made it or been left out of the statement. Um, and I'm not gonna go through with a fine tooth comb. We got a lot of people to speak here. I would like to fix the problem and as Erica can, she can testify, she's on here. We did have a good, we had a, we had a, a good system in place and, and, and we embraced the whole texting back and forth. Last thing I want to do is see that cute dog who, who who my dog has attacked, uh, take, take any more injuries and, and to think anything other than that is, it's not fair. So we now take our dog out on a leash during the day, middle of the night when there's no one out there. I'm letting him out. He goes to the bathroom, runs right back in. But we've instituted that, not letting Theo out, um, without being on the leash. And, um, Marley's being lumped into this. Marley never bit anybody. In the, in the first incident, Marley was part of that. She ran and followed Theo. But in the second incident, Marley never made it out of the house. So to portray both of my dogs in the same light and that I have a pack of marauding German shepherds. The way this whole four-page statement that I just had to listen to, the, the way it was read and the way it was written. There wasn't one positive thing Ms. Bennett had to say about the Lang and family. Every possible slant and, and in the light that she put this makes us look absolutely awful. I do take responsibility for what my dog did. I want to fix this. Okay, but like, um, Mr. Moblin said, the, the fuse has been lit. And unfortunately, it's, I know who lifted, who lifted the, the fuse and, and now I'm dealing with having having to deal with some very serious repercussions for at least one of my dogs. And if we're to believe this statement, both of my dogs. But I'm, I've said my piece and I, I am willing to work, Mr. Moblin, with the town of Southwick. There have been no other issues since the last one. It's because we've instituted, taking my dog on a leash. And I realize now that that dog, for whatever reason, has an issue with Trixie, unfortunately. So, um, my dog hasn't, there are no other reports filed about my dog, dog or dogs in this town. So it's clear that the dog has an issue with that white dog or perhaps the dog walker and the white dog, but um, I think it's Trixie and we just gotta, we're gonna keep her separated from Trixie. Um, and I'll follow whatever direction you guys, you guys have for, for the, the Lang and family.
Jennifer, do you have anything to add? I think you're on mute, Jennifer.
I think my hu, my husband summed it up. Um, I, I do feel like this, this report is extremely skewed. Um, and, and it is disheartening that my daughter, Marissa, that was standing at the, at the door, wasn't able to put her two cents in of what happened. Um, and that's fine. I just, I can just tell you what I, I can go back and forth and I'm not gonna do that. I can just tell you, like my husband just said. We are doing everything communicating with, we communicate with Erica back and forth when she says the dog walker's walking. Our dog doesn't go out without a leash. I don't even let both dogs go out together, even though Marley should not even be lumped into this because it hasn't been Marley. Um, so I know that we're doing, we're doing things on our end. And, and, and that's really it. I'm not gonna go back and forth about the discrepancies, but there are many on the report and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, before I take additional comments, I'm gonna pause and ask if anyone from the select board has any questions for either the complainant or the, the Lang and's.
I, I, I get it. And I'm not looking at all the incidences, Sean, that, that are on the paper. We'll look at the last incident, which is an incident that happened, like you said, and you guys get that. But I, my own, I don't want to be an ass, but the day I have to text a neighbor to walk my own dog, we're done. And I get that's an issue you guys worked out, but that's crazy. I mean, because luckily you guys know each other. Imagine if someone moved in next door and just started to walk their dog and, and your poor dog had a problem with it. Holy shit. I mean, I get it. And that's, so to me, right, there's the, the biggest issue. We have to fix that. Like you said, you would do it. I get that. And we'll go on with this conversation, but I understand the letters. I understand your thoughts as far as what did or didn't happen. I get it. So we'll deal with the one in front of us, as you admitted, yes, there's a problem. So we'll move on. I'll shut up.
Mr. Fox?
I'm all set at this time, Doug.
I wish I were too. I just, I mean, it there's, seems to be no dispute. I'm gonna get to everybody on this call, believe me, but it seems to me regardless of what the detail in the, in the report from Ms. Bennett, which, you know, there may be some details that are off. I, I'll give, I'll give you that. But it, there's no doubt based on Mr., Mr. Lang and's own admission that Theo left the property after these other dogs on at least one occasion and sounds to me like more than one. So it, just to your point, Sean, you know, I appreciate where you're coming from, but like I said, you know, and like I said a couple of minutes ago. And I agree with Joe. Anybody in the town of Southwick should be able to walk down the street in relative peace and quiet and not have to be in fear of being bit by someone else's dog. We just, and, and I'll be honest, we had this less than a year ago. We had this exact same scenario sans the texting, right? And, you know, that was a very similar situation happened more than once. And I get it, something happens once, okay, but this is more than once. So just where we are right now and, um, I don't know how this works exactly, but let's try to go around the room here. Um, if anyone wants to add, so if anyone has any commentary, I thought there was a way to raise your hand or something, but.
Can I just go first if possible?
Who, who was that? I'm sorry. Is that the one that says a galley, Galaxy S10 on my screen?
That would be me, the Galaxy.
How do you spell that?
My name?
Yeah.
Wendy, W E N D I, Mello, M E L L O.
Okay. You're, the floor is yours, Wendy.
All right, um.
And your address, please. Oh, you're at 25 Davis, right? Gotcha.
Um, this has nothing to do with Erica. I am friends with both of, of these parties and love Erica to pieces and love the Lang and's to pieces. Um, I just want to say that. Um, I just want to say that, um, I have had my dog over to their house, to the Langens' house many of times. They get along perfectly fine. There's no issues whatsoever. I've done a lot of work with, um, for many, many years with the big dog, big fluffy dog, uh, rescue. So I know the signs of viciousness when, uh, when dogs have it. I have not ever once seen that from either of the, the Langen dogs. Um, I understand that they're, you know, this happened when they were, you know, outside and not. Um, secured. I understand that. I have multiple times gone to their house to dog sit with zero problems whatsoever to walk in the house. And, and have the dogs be perfectly fine that I'm there with nobody home. My daughter, um, has, has dogs sat for them even more times than I have. And still same thing, there's never been any issues. I do want to add that, you know, if, if there had been an issue or two and why, why could you not walk dogs in a different direction than to go by the Langens' house? Because you could go both ways until they had gotten, you know, they, I've been told that they are getting a fence put in. And they're, you know, why can't you go a different direction for now until that gets settled? I guess that's, you know, probably my, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cody.
Yes, um, I'm very good friends with the Langens. I don't know, uh, the other parties involved. I just want to say that the, um, Theo has never been aggressive in my, in my presence. Marley just tends to follow him around. Marley's, uh, shouldn't be involved in this, in my opinion either. I did not witness it, but, uh, Theo's not an aggressive dog, just a little excitable, I think. Just a kind of a character assessment. That's all I have to add.
Thank you, sir. The Coon family.
All right. So I'm also a friend with the Langens. I've owned dogs my entire life. And I have never had an issue with either Theo or Marley. I, I do have one question. Um, we walk our dogs in our neighborhood, um, on many days. And on occasion, another dog will come out, uh, we call the dog officer. And, uh, we're told that if a single instance happens, then they will wait for another instance to happen. So there's nothing. That, so there's nothing that's typically done. And so my question is, it, it sounds like there was one incident here that's been reported. So why is the meeting being held?
Uh, from the notes I have here, it looks like there was more than one. And, um, this, a, a hearing was requested by the ACO and that's why we're here.
Those weren't reported. There wasn't, those weren't reported. I think my husband tried to chime in to say exactly that. Thanks, Michael. Sorry.
So your point taken. I'll endeavor to find out. Ms. Jacobs, are you here for this matter or another matter?
I am here for another matter. Thank you.
I kind of figured and.
Thanks.
Ms. Ailish McGivney.
Yes.
You have a, go ahead. Floor is yours.
Um, I just want to say I grew up with the Langens. I have been to that house more times than I can count. I have walked my dog outside of their house. My dog has met their dog. There has never once been an issue. There, I've known people, guys, girls, anyone, all of our friends that have been to that house have never had an issue with that dog. I don't know why this is, yeah, that's all I'm, I gotta say.
I don't know where it's that tall building in Southwick. RJ.
Hi, this is Anne McGivney. Hi. I echo my daughter. Um, I've been there. Uh, I think the biggest thing that I want to share is I, their son is a baby and the dog has been so gentle, so kind, so perfect. Now, in the house, I, I get it. It's outside of the house. There's differences. And I do want to say that, that I, I understand where Erica's coming from in terms of being a little afraid. But we have not had any issues at all. And that dog is a sweetheart to us. And we have grown up with him and the Langens and they want to do the right thing and I know they will. So I think that's something to just take into account here, please.
And I don't know if we swore you in, Anne, but consider yourself sworn in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
My husband had to stand out, so.
That's all right.
Yeah.
If I could, could I possibly speak?
Who's this?
This is Colleen Sokovich.
Sure thing, Colleen.
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've had, we've been friends with the Langens for years. And we've never had an issue with Theo or Marley ever at the house. I have two boys. Um, we've been there many, many times and love the dogs. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I was actually saying to a friend the other day, how amazing Theo was with the baby that they have. And, uh, so I just hope that you take that into account as well.
Okay. And all the names moved around on my screen, so I lost track. Is there a Ms. Perry? Or Becca Perrin? Do they want to talk about this particular issue?
No.
Oh, Doug, it's Hope. I'm signed in under my, uh, somebody from work's name by accident tonight.
Oh, you're sneaking in on us, Hope. Okay. Okay. Did I get everybody or does anyone else want to speak on this issue?
I would like to speak on this issue.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Carly Langen.
Okay.
Um, Theo's actually my dog. I got him, I got him when I begged my parents for another puppy. Um, Theo has always been like, he's protective over me especially. I've raised him. I, I, I was the one who's actually there. I won't bring up any Pat's incidents besides this one. But I will second my parents. The, I just have a lot to question, but I'm not going to question it. Theo has always been, I, I've walked Theo. And he's always, I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't even know what to say right now because I'm just upset because he's my dog. And, um, I'm just, I, I, I can't talk. Oh my God. I'm sorry. I can't talk.
Doug, can I jump in for a quick second and maybe we can wrap this up?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Diddy.
Yes, sir.
I can't agree with you more.
I know that. I know.
Can't agree with you more.
And I wish people here understood, no one here wants to put a dog down. That, just so you understand that, that's never been our intent. It's the last thing we want to do. We go above and beyond to try to make things work for all parties. Just, just get that out there because I don't, it almost sounds like you guys think we're gonna, you know, put the dog up today and we're not, we don't, we, well. Trust me, we've gone there and it's been hell and back. So we try not to do that.
And I, and so hearing you say that, obviously everybody in the room knows what's at stake. First and foremost is this, the, the safety of, of her dog and the dog walker. That's the last thing. Anybody in the Langen family would have thought to see happen to, uh, at least to the dog. Not going to bring up, um, all, all the specifics, but yeah. So what, I just want you to know, uh, the, uh, the rest of you, that since this incident, it was clear to me and to the family that Theo with that dog cannot be trusted. And so the, the tactic we employed at that point was using, um, the leash very consistently to, um, to ensure that anybody, if you want to include the whole community, because it happened to, uh, to, in this past incident. But that, that couldn't possibly happen again. All right. You may feel, maybe the dogs may, I don't know how you can, but you might feel that we might need to go to the extreme. But I've already taken it upon myself and the family, but hey, first and foremost, we, this dog needs to go out on a leash. And that's it. And that's it until the dog's final days. But, um, that's working. Okay. So you, maybe a fence, if that's what you insist upon, I can't put one in now the ground's too frozen, but um, I'm open to anything, obviously, but what we're at least doing right now is working. And, um, I just wanted, because that was pretty, it's pretty powerful hearing you say that. And even when it was read on the transcript, I know there's something wrong with that. I just, uh, we were just trying to jockey and figure out what, what, what could work. And unfortunately, the one time we didn't get the text, this happens. So I know we've been painted out to be ogres, but we're not. We're, we're good men, we're good members of, of the community. We have a good circle of friends, as you can see. Folks that have come up to speak on our behalf and we want to do what's right. And I'll leave it at that.
Joe, are you good?
Yeah, it was this conversation. Yeah, I'm fine with it. No, he, he's a good looking ogre if he's an ogre, first of all. But, um, yeah, once again, I mean, I, I just want Erica Dunn to be very comfortable in her surroundings as, as Sean, you would too, right? If Eric's dog was the big dog and attacked your dog, you'd be beside yourself. And if you had lost your wife instead of her husband, you'd be beside yourself. I absolutely understand and you understand it too. You're, you're a smart guy. You're not stupid, nor is your wife. You guys get it. This sucks. We're here in front of it and we got to figure it out. Absolutely.
I want to fix it.
Yes.
Okay.
And I will hold you to that, to the utmost end of the world, unfortunately.
All right.
Go ahead, Doug.
Okay. Does anyone else want to be heard on this issue?
If I could just, uh, pipe in one more time.
Sure thing, Ms. Bennett.
Okay. I am not in the business of making people out to be ogres or irresponsible owners or anything else. I take the facts as they are given to me and I put them down in my report. Erica was extremely upset over this and the last incident. Um, and it was only after talking to her and the dog walker and the trainer that, uh, we got all the incidents kind of put in line. And I can understand her point of view as far as being afraid to walk her dog past Langen's house. I can also understand Langen's viewpoint, I guess. Um, every time I tried to, um, see how we could correct this. And it wasn't just me, it was the dog walker. It was the, it was the trainer. Who, you know, made these suggestions and we tried to work in chorus with each other to find the solution. And it just, this is as far as it got because we got no response. We got no responsiveness, I should say, um, from the language as far as, um, getting something positive or a solution. So unfortunately it has to come to this and I, I don't want to be here either. But again, I have to take the facts as they are given to me and present them before the board. And if I don't feel that a solution is coming to fruition, I bring it to the board and I say, okay, what are we, what are we going to do as a group? And that's where this has all set now. Nobody is looking to put the dogs down. Nobody is looking to, um, do anything of that nature. It's just, we need to find an answer. We need to find a solution. Um, so that no one will be afraid to walk their dogs past this house. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Mr. Cody, you have your hand up? You're muted. Still muted, Mr. Cody.
Oops, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Trying to be polite with my hand. Um, I just want to add that I was bit on North Loomis Street in, uh, August of 2018. I was the third person that had been bit. And, uh, I, uh, it, it, it never escalated to the point of involving the, the town and the select board. So, um, I, I, I'm a, I appreciate your time with this. And it is good to hear that the dog is not going to be put down. And if I can help the Langens in any way to resolve the situation, I'm here for them. But, uh, appreciate the select board time and everybody else listening. Thank you.
Doug, I'm sorry. I have to ask for one more minute. If you would please allow me one more minute, because Ms. Bennett just made just, again, painted a picture that we've been negligent. Uh, since, since this was brought up, since this happened. We did reach out to Erica's friends, the dog trainer. Who came over, made an assessment, was scared to work with the dog because she thought my dog was sick. Turns out my dog wasn't regardless. We got the ball rolling. Uh, then my, I and my, my wife both contracted COVID and we were actually sick for two full weeks. And then it takes a week to shake the fog of that off. And then going back to work. I'm just talking about the most recent month, uh, here, here behind us. And then to take my daughter off to college, get her settled in, that took a week. So plus we have, um, we have a young child in the house that we care for. Fortunately, a lot better than apparently we care for our dogs. But I just want you to know that we did take it seriously. And again, Ms. Bennett likes to paint a picture. She comes on and she couldn't, had to get the last word and paint that dark picture about how the Langen family, uh, neglected its responsibility.
All right. So, all right, I'm going to stop right there. I think we've got, I think we've heard enough testimony on both sides and, and
All right.
And I, I've, I've heard, I'm, I'll pull the other guys because, but I think I've heard enough. And as far as for a hearing and then where we're going to end up from here, right? And, and I'll echo what Joe said, at least. No one's looking to put your dog down. No one's looking to take your dog away, right? We just want to make sure that folks can walk on the street in, in relative safety from your dog. There's no doubt what happened as far as, you know, by your own admission that your dog left your property and, and, and the young lady felt, you know, scared for her safety at the hands of Theo. And, uh, we'll leave Marley out of this. All right. And, um, that's where we're at, right? So.
Little impartiality from Ms. Bennett. That's all. Maybe for the future citizens.
I get it. But yeah, I just also sense, you know, I guess this is, uh, you know, I guess I sense her frustration with it. And I under, you know, there's circumstance with all of it. And I, and I, I hope you can feel the frustration. I know you can hear it from Joe. I hope you're hearing it from me, right? You know, of being a selectman in the town of Southwick, the lastest thing on the planet is dog hearings, right? And unfortunately we've been through like just too many of them. One is too many, right? And there's no good dog hearing. You know, we've been through it with a dog that, you know, that bit somebody once, right? And, but it was a fairly bad, bad situation, right? That came out of it, right? And then we've been to one where the dog had bit quite a few people, right? It just, it was serial over years. And there was no, that dog wasn't getting better, right? Um, so in this case, we're kind of ahead of it, right? This is not, it doesn't seem like there's a, um, yeah, it's a, it's a constant thing with, unfortunately with Erica's dog, your dog has a thing for Erica's dog or whatever. But it's not, it, unfortunately it is what it is, right? I, I, I get it. No one's accusing anybody of being funny. I'm trying to get to the end of a hearing here, right? You know, basically this has been, and, and what I was going to say, Ms. Emman is, you know, in, in every instance to date, okay? I found that it's never the dog's fault, right? It's always the owner's fault, right? And whether it's lack of training or lack of restraint of the dog or, or what have you, right? That's where we're at. So I understand where Ms. Bennett's coming from. I understand, Sean, where you're coming from, and I understand where everyone on this hearing's coming from as far as, you guys are great people. I don't, I don't doubt that for a second, right? But I think that when we're at the point where we're having a dog hearing, there's been a. been a failure by the owner because it just isn't the dog's fault. Even if the dog is totally mental and would maul anyone within 10 feet of it, then it's the owner's fault for having that dog, right? That's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay. So, and, and I'm not saying that, that Theo is that dog, right? I'm, I'm not saying that, but there's a problem with Ms. Emelman's dog, right? And, and it's nothing about your dog, Ms. Emelman. This, your Theo has an issue with your dog. It's not your dog's fault, but that, that's not your fault. That's Mr. Langen's fault because he shouldn't, that dog shouldn't leave the property and you should be able to, or anyone should be able to walk your dog right on by in the town of Southwick, on the street, on a public way, on the same side of the street, opposite side of the street. I don't care. Okay. So with that, um, I'm going to take a motion, if there's no objection, a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I have one question before we accept that motion?
Oh, absolutely.
I was just going to ask Erica, uh, Erica, what action would you like to see the select board take on this matter? I know that you're all neighbors and you're all friends, but what action would make you comfortable?
A 100% have to put a fence up.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make the motion to close the hearing then, Mr. Chairman.
Joe Didi will second that motion.
Roll call vote. Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'm going to move with the rest of our agenda. And if time permit, we'll come back and discuss where we're going to go from here, if that's okay with the other gentleman.
That's fine.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I saw, did I see, I thought I saw Jen Willard. Was she, is she still here? There she is. Hi Jen, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good. To what do we owe this visit?
I believe us, Steve Presnell and myself were invited because we were going to be talking about, uh, green energy and working with the town around green buildings.
Fantastic.
So you have about an hour.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fox and I met with the green energy program people and some of what will need to be in place for a green energy arrangement relates to an obligation of the school to undertake some activities.
So we want to take, Mr. Fox.
I, I, I did reach out to the chairman of the regional school committee, Mr. Hool, uh, after, uh, Mr. Steinhardt and I had conversation with the, uh, uh, green energy people, Brian Sullivan and Mark Robinsky. And, uh, when they told us that, uh, they would certainly like to see if the region would not, would, would join with us if we go in that direction, uh, it would be very beneficial to the region and into the town because the town of Granville and the Talon Taland are already green communities. So it would enhance grant funding if the board chose to go in this direction. And, uh, uh, Mr. Steinhardt and I, we're going to give you a, a briefing on this issue, uh, under old business.
Okay. So you want to, want me to march through the remainder of our, our discussion items to get to old business, or you want to take that up now while we have, uh, Jen and?
Well, since, uh, Jen and Steve have been, uh, with us for quite a while now.
That's what I'm asking.
And I think Randy's been with us quite a while too. So if, if we could just, just again, give a quick briefing, uh, Carl and I spent, uh, I, an hour or two, uh, with, uh, Brian Sullivan and Mark Robinsky, uh, going over, uh, it's, it's not a simple process to become a green community. Uh, it's a serious commitment, but there is, uh, a way of getting assistance, uh, to provide all the documents that are necessary. Uh, but it is going to be some man hours. And if the school goes along with us, it would be man hours that they'd have to do also. Uh, but, and it's, would require town meeting. It would require, uh, the planning board be involved, building inspector being involved. Uh, but, but I think that, uh, the fact that Southwick is one of the few communities left in the area, not a green community, and there are monies available to assist us. And I think one of the biggest holdup in the past, why we did not go was the stretch code. Uh, but now the state, uh, legislation has, uh, we pretty much are at the stretch code already. So, uh, I, I would be in favor of, uh, asking the board to, uh, start the process, uh, get the parties together so that it's something that we could look over when, uh, we're doing our budgets.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Steinhardt.
By extension with that, uh, there's, there's five criteria that are part of this process, which is the as of right zoning and permitting, the stretch code adoption, the fuel efficient vehicle, which we only have three or four cars in a pool, in our pool fleet anyway, because we've been migrating over to auto allowances. So that's going to actually help us. But another criteria was energy reduction plan and baseline, which they want to make sure is in place for the energy use of all municipal buildings and facilities. And then within that, they're looking for schools to be part of the town's green energy project. And I did point out to them that our schools, um, two things, that they were a separate governmental entity and that they had just undergone, um, significant improvements to their, uh, different buildings. But I know not, not all of the buildings were, were touched from an energy point of view necessarily. So, but in terms of that criteria, the school board is required to adopt an energy reduction, uh, plan and provide a letter from the superintendent. So that's what tripped, um, Russ's need to reach out to the schools and to speak to Chairman Hool and as well as Jeff then speaking to, um, uh, Jen and Stephen about this issue.
And I would also add, Mr. Chairman, that we did ask the state if they would give us any credit for energy things that we have already undertaken. And they are reviewing that to see if, if that could be part of our plan.
Yeah. I mean, we, we know in the future, and we've talked about this at previous meetings where Randy was getting estimates for us for that decorative street lighting to, uh, migrate those over to LED. But we also know in our municipal buildings, um, fire, police, especially town hall, which is older than, than those two buildings are all going to have to have, um, issues with furnaces and HVA systems, uh, looked at. Of course, all of those different issues relate to the cost of running our buildings. And, you know, if we can make those more high tech and fuel efficient, then that's going to lower our operating costs. So there are plenty of places for us to identify, to use in the municipal setting, um, to, to address those issues. Now, the other thing that I did coming out of the meeting was I did reach out to the regional planning agency, um, who had been contacting us in the, I believe you remember Catherine Ratai was asking us in the past where we stood on this and the board wasn't ready to entertain that. So, um, uh, we are at the point where they, uh, they do want to work with us. So if you want to go forward, there are some votes and motions that I would suggest to the chair that could be read off to begin this process, but, uh, the board needs to finish deliberating and discussing and deciding.
Okay. So what do we, so if the school wants to come in, there needs to be a, what's the process for that? Or we don't have, or that's for them to let us know?
I think they have to do their own, um, separate energy response, um, reduction plan and, and that has to come through, uh, Jen and probably Steve and Eric Wickender and so forth. So that would be something that, uh, all those different steps could be determined how she would procedurally do that. There may not be an answer on how that would be done at this point in time. But I did speak to the, I did speak to the, uh, the regional planning agency and some issues they could be working on next summer, but they understand from the situation you're in that, um, in terms of getting ready to file, to enter into this program, we would have to do a bunch of things leading up to town meeting.
Okay. Mr. Fox.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that it would be a good move and hopefully the school seems to believe the same thing, that we move in this direction. Uh, there are funds available, uh, that we can be applied for on an annual basis. And I think you're going to see a greater movement towards this and perhaps even additional funds made available in the future. Um, and I, I think that, uh, it would be a good idea if we start the ball rolling, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Didi.
Aye, aye, aye. Um, I'm not thrilled with this from years ago. I get it. It's, it's where we're headed. I, um, you know, before it was a couple thousand dollars to have a house tested. And my understanding, the more we looked into it, it isn't so much the older houses, it's the new construction. And then I would be upset and say, geez, a guy's going to spend two grand to get something looked at. But you know, a house doesn't cost a hundred grand anymore, does it, Russ? You know, not in, not in Southwick. So, so I don't think it's that big of a, a nut to, to, to conquer versus the price of the house today. So if it's two grand and the houses are, last I looked, they're going for 200 and over. So I, I guess it's time to really look at it. And quite honestly, anything that comes in front of us from now on, the next few years, let's just put it in front of the taxpayers and have them look at it. As much as they think that we're here to do our job, a lot of times it appears that we're not doing our job anymore. So yeah, let's just throw it in front of the taxpayers. Absolutely, Russ. Yep. How's that? I didn't even swear.
Well, I, I mean, I think we can send it forward as far as the process that needs to go. And I think this is something, there are going to be similar analogies coming in the very near future as far as programs and, and, and things that if you get in on the ground floor of them, it's a lot easier to, there's, there's a lot more into it for you as a community than if you wait until the state tells you you have to, right? And they've done that with this green energy program, right? We've, we've, I wouldn't say avoided, it's not the right word, but we haven't decided to sign up.
Right.
But because frankly, the enticements weren't there for a community of our size. A lot of communities southeast got a lot better deals than we were going to get. And it would actually, you know, net negative for construction, net negative for the town for cost. You know, instead of taking, you know, cruisers out of cycle and using that for the building inspector's car, we'd have to go spend 40, 50 grand on a brand new hybrid car, right? And, you know, one could argue to the cows come home as to the energy that went into making that brand new car versus, you know, the gas we're going to use in the building inspector's car over the five years we keep it, you know, if that pays off, right? That's just a, you could have that argument and you'll never get to the right answer, right? But I think that, go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, don't forget in, in the past, uh, before you, uh, got on the board, we had done it what's called an investment grade audit with Siemens. And it was through a grant program and we had Beacon integrated with, uh, Beth Greenblatt. So we had done quite a bit of all of these things. And at that time, the schools were under, um, their design and preparation for all their improvements. So that wasn't going to be a party to our, um, calculation. So when they were done doing all the recommendations for all the municipal buildings, a lot of the issues that were determined, um, that had to be addressed, we took, uh, we took care of those things with John Westcott and yourself and the finance committee through the annual budget process. We addressed those issues. Um, those issues were then taken care of. And then when they, uh, the investment grade company came back and they looked at it, they just said there, you know, now that you've done all of these other issues and minus the schools, there really wasn't a project to do in the municipal buildings at that time. But here we are, fast forward 10 years later, now we've got buildings where we have furnaces and HVAC and things of this nature that have to be addressed, um, that lend themselves to these opportunities. Cause, um, just entering the program alone yields the town a $140,000 earmark to use for those, um, those types of building issues. And then you start layering into the issues that Randy would like to see done with the, uh, the LED, LED lights and then other opportunities the school could apply for directly. Then it starts to make sense that these, um, opportunities are out there because these are dollars that are being appropriated in the state budget that we should be trying to capture so that our, um, taxpayers locally don't have to foot the bill for things that state can pay for.
I'll just smile. So let's, um, so Mr. Fox, what's the next step here?
Uh, two motions. You'd like me to read them?
Sure.
Motion authorize the chairman to enter into a local technical assistance in agreement for services with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for support assistance for the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Energy Program.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Russ Fox.
Joe Didi will second that motion.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
All right. The next, uh, the next motion would relate to the fact that I've already alerted the town planner and the building inspector regarding these other pieces of legislation. And that would also be to have a motion to have town council assist and prepare, um, and work with obviously PVPC and our other boards and committees, uh, town meeting articles for the zoning and general bylaws for the annual town meeting action.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Joe Didi will second it.
Roll call vote. Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
All right. So that's what I have on those.
And they, I just wanted to note, the planning board did have a meeting last week. They didn't have too much on their agenda, so they, uh, they decided to take up solar as a general discussion. Um, I'm kidding because they had that, the other decision that they, they set forth, but, um, this will probably factor into that because it's some of its by right citing of certain activities within the town, right under zoning, which we don't have for these uses. So they'll probably have to take a look at that to see how that would work. Um, and unfortunately, that's what comes with these, some of these programs like this is you, you have to take some of the, some of that guidance from the state.
We call them linkages.
Yeah. That's not the word I would use, but there was miners on the call earlier. So I'll just leave it alone. But, you know,
So, so what?
The carrot and the stick.
These are draft bylaws. So the draft bylaws we would send to Chairman Darhty and to Alan and they'd start reviewing that. And they could see how they want that to be either standalone or to be incorporated into those other zoning bylaw changes they want, that they can refer back to your board under the statute to then refer.
Got it.
So what do you need from the schools? Because we, we have been working on our own, um, few green issues over the past few years, uh, and we are constantly looking, we see it as a way to save money as well. Um, a little bit of an investment here. It saves you money in the long run. So what do you need from us in this process?
I think what we'd like to do, Jen, is what we would have the, uh, the regional planning agency point person from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, um, identify the types of issues that a school needs to do in terms of their energy reduction plan and whether or not any votes have to be taken by the district school committee.
Okay.
And now, now that the board has, um, okayed, um, Mr. Fox's, uh, proposal here this evening to go forward, now we start to address all those issues and find out what needs to be done by each department or entity, including yours.
Sounds great. So we will do it again, as I say it all the time, we will do what we can to work with the towns, um, because we are a community and we work together. So we are here to help you.
Granville and Tolland ever reached out when they became green communities?
No, I didn't. I didn't know they were green, but Steve may know that. That's more in Steve's wheelhouse than mine.
I seem to recall, um, maybe hearing from, uh, the town of Tolland. I, I'm not recalling Granville. It's possible they did. Um, but I do remember at least one of the, the other two communities, um, reaching out. It turned out to be almost like a nothing, um, on, um, It turned out to be almost like a nothing um on um back then, on our side, yeah.
Yeah.
Was this prior to the school building projects, Steve, or post?
No, it was post. It was uh in the last, say, several years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the the benefit of having all three communities in there when it comes to competitive grants, instead of being limited to a two hundred thousand dollar a year grant, uh the school could put in for up to six hundred thousand dollars for a proposal in a competitive grant, you know, it's not guaranteed, but you know.
Well, we do, you know, it's it's kind of intriguing because we do have some legacy uh boilers that were not taken out as uh part of the um school building project that the MSBA helped fund um years back. So and some of those are uh, you know, we've sort of start started to, well, they're on a list, you know, what um the need to be replaced. So uh timing is always an issue. And if there's some dollars that we might be able to access um down the road, it's definitely worth looking at.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
So what we'll do, Mr. Chairman, is we'll also reach out to uh Mark Rabinsky from the DOE R in Brian Sullivan's office and we'll uh we'll ask them what are the documents that they also need to send to us from their um contracts and things of that nature, okay?
Sounds great.
Uh thank you, Mr. Fox, for all your work on this so far. And you know, obviously, it's always a good opportunity to work with the schools on these types of projects, right? They're they're a big part of the budget and some of their their buildings are big, so their expenses when they happen like this are tend to be outsized, right? So it'd be a great opportunity to try to defray some of those structural costs.
And Mr. Chairman, Mark Rabinsky has offered to come out to any public meetings uh to meet
Our meeting.
Uh anything uh to uh to meet with the if we had a hearing with the public, uh they're available to come out and to make sure that they are there to answer all questions.
Great, especially now that you can do it all on Zoom. You don't have to even come out.
Right.
Steve, are you at school?
Oh, you're muted, bud. No, I'm in my dining room.
Why the lanyard? Do you feel naked or something without an armor, you know?
Yes.
Are you bullying us for that? That's the next question.
Yeah, it's just not official, Joe, unless I've got the flag.
Okay. Just want to make sure you knew that was there.
I was just checking to see if you guys were paying attention.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, you know what? Steve, I wear my when I when I used to go to my office back in the days pre-COVID, I walked around with that thing on when I got home too, because if I put it down someplace else, I will not have it the next morning. So I get it.
Yes, yes, that is the truth.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for inviting us. Um I love that you reach out and we are here. So um thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Randy still here?
Yeah.
I think we're right on time, Mr. Chairman.
This is almost like a planning board meeting. My six oh five appointment.
If we were central time, we'd be we'd be right on time.
Six ten. Me and Randy have been spending an unhealthy amount of time together this last week, so this is good. Um. DPW Director Fiscal Year Twenty Two Budget Highlights.
All right, so uh you have a list, I believe, in front of you. Um I guess we can go through these items one by one, if that's all right. I think a lot of these are repetitive items that we see, some some of them we see every year that are carryovers. Others are ones that we've talked about in the past that have not been funded. And there's a couple of uh new items on here as well.
Yeah, Randy, I I didn't get that list. I mean, we have the we have the transportation, the tech list, but we didn't. And we have your other action items for the bylaw and and trash, but I don't remember seeing the highlight list.
Did I get I gave the Robin uh last week?
I don't have it. I never received that.
Could you just read them, Randy?
Or if you want to, do you have it where you could email it to me right now and I can share the screen?
I can't. I'm sorry. No, I don't.
Just read them off, Randy verbally.
Yeah. Okay, so uh first items are the on the highway department. Um these are all of our paving and infrastructure projects. Um we have three large capital items that we get funded every year, one for paving, one for construction and one for improvements. Uh those total about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh those are carryovers every year. Um and then the next big item I have on the list is the, you know, the big item, the paving and infrastructure projects. Um we've got money in this account for the past two years. Uh two years ago, we got two million dollars. Last year, we got a million dollars. Um with that million dollars this year, we're looking to do work on a tannery road uh Lexington Circle, Patriots Way, and hopefully some other projects. Um so I'd like to carry that uh forward. Um you know, last I requested three million and I guess, you know, there's certainly no shortage of projects. Um you know, a- any amount of money would be certainly appreciated. Um I think the money that we've put into the road network the last couple of years has been great and we've seen some improvements. And this is just one of the things that we need to keep on uh continuing to fund every year. Otherwise, uh we're going to get a situation that we were in where we were not funding our roads and putting money into our road network. And they they were deteriorating. Um any any questions on that? I I know in the past, we've, you know, once we got the money uh set aside and and funded at town meeting, then we would talk about specific projects. Um certainly, we could talk about projects if you like. Uh otherwise, we're just talking about the, you know, where the need to to fund um our our road networks.
That's good.
Okay, a second item, uh some uh so road machinery. Um we have been asking for a new tractor uh for a few years now. Um this would be to replace our John Deere tractor. Um that tractor, it was used for roadside mowing. Um it's uh in a condition where it's really not uh safe to use. The high guys have used it only sparingly over the past couple of years, only when uh completely necessary. Uh but certainly our our uh pave our uh roadside activities um have not changed.
Randy, what's the value on that?
Uh one hundred seventy one thousand.
Okay, now as just to remind the board, you did have some money at one point in time that you were going to use tour that so that you only needed to go get the balance of the money for this. But you since decided you wanted to have a second chipper. Oh, that's that's the money that helped um buy the chipper.
Yeah, there were some other monies too that were spent over the last couple of years. I think there was a a um the Botcat and some attachments we bought. You know, so we kind of whittled away at those funds over the past two years.
Right, I think it's down to about fifteen thousand left, Randy. Remember, there was about eighty eight member, and I think there's about maybe fifteen left tops.
Yeah, sounds about right. Yep.
Okay.
Is the one hundred seventy one just the tractor, Randy, or is that the mower too?
Uh no, that's the the complete machine, the tractor with the mower attachment.
Okay, the boom mower.
Yeah, yes, boom mower. Yes, it's a boom mower and a and a flare mower. Yes, yep.
Okay.
Boom mower, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
But I if you like, I can send you the quotes that we have on these machines or if you, you know, even better, if you want to come take a look at our current equipment. I certainly encourage you to come do that and you just let me know or give Chris a call and that we happy to meet you and show you all this equipment that we're looking to um upgrade.
Yep. We've done that before.
Yep. Uh the next item is a hot box. So this is a machine that we use uh for paving puddles. Um we get hot mixed asphalt. Either we produce it ourselves or we we purchase it. We put it in the hot box uh and there's a heating element that keeps that asphalt um warm uh until we can uh and we and it's on a trailer, it's just it's on a trailer so we can uh drive around town and place that material where it's needed. Um the cost for a new hot box is about forty one thousand dollars. Um our current hot box is a is was built in twenty ten. Um we have had issues with the heating system in the past. Um I want to upgrade that. Also, the the new hot boxes have a larger capacity. Um they can hold more asphalt so we can get the better progress done uh uh and more effectively with it with the the new machine.
Randy, would you be selling the old one? You're not going to keep that then?
No, we no need to keep it.
Right.
Yep. Okay, the next item is a dump truck. Um we've uh we purchased two dump trucks in the past uh three or four years. Uh we have five in our fleet. Um the dump truck that um right now is giving us the most problems is a two thousand five international. Um I do have uh sheets here that I have with me and I can share with you. Every time we have work done or this machine is taken out of service, uh we keep logs of it. Um this machine, we put about twenty six thousand dollars of repairs into this into this truck over the past three years. Um just to keep it on the road. It's one of those important pieces that uh certainly you need when especially when the snow hits, uh we need all five pieces of equipment up and running. Um after that dump truck, we do have actually an older machine, a two thousand dump truck um that is actually a slightly better condition than uh this oh five. Uh but in the next probably year or two, we'll be probably looking to replace that second truck as well.
Hmm.
Uh a new item we have on the on the, sorry, go ahead.
Randy, what was the cost of the new dump truck?
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
Sorry, you're breaking up. Did you say two hundred and sixty thousand?
Two six zero, correct.
I thought that's what you said.
All right, the next item is a paving box. Um this is not something that we have uh at our disposal now, um but this would allow us to pave larger sections uh in-house. So uh what we do now, uh we can pave small patches, um but uh we could do with a paving box. Um this is basically a drag behind machine where you you dump the asphalt in it and it drags behind the road or drags behind the truck and it levels the asphalt. Um so if you have a a road or a situation where you've got uh um a large area that asphalt's deteriorated, a real bumpy area, maybe a lot of potholes, um with this paving box, you can kind of pave over it and get one nice big um surface repair to it. Certainly not a a permanent repair, but if you need to get by um for an extended period of time, um doing this type of repair was certainly would uh would be very very useful. Um the cost for a paving box is a twenty eight thousand dollars.
Uh before Mr. Fox asked the million dollar question, does any of our men know how to use that or will there be a different um what's that word? I'm licensed, you're needed to use that.
No, I think all of all I know all of our guys can operate all this equipment. There's no issue.
All right, continue.
Uh the last piece of equipment is a a loader. So we at the transfer station, we have a I think it's a two thousand, I'm sorry, it's a it's a nineteen eighty four loader that uh gets
Barely broken in.
A class of eighty four, finally we win.
Very sparingly used. Um
Better than condition.
Our our primary loader is a nineteen ninety nine loader, John Deere loader that we use. Um again, that machine is uh is getting up there in age. Um I think it would be wise to have uh a a new machine and then uh bring bring the 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 nineteen ninety nine loader, put that down at the transfer station. Uh they will certainly use it. Um they use the uh the eighty four loader sparingly because uh because it really is not uh it does have some safety issues, safety issues with it. Um but a new loader is also uh on the on the wishlist as well. And the cost for a load is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So those are the five pieces of equipment that are on our wishlist this year. I think the first three of them were carryovers from last year. I know uh the prices are extremely high and uh eye popping in maybe uh some situations. Um but that doesn't mean that we don't have a need for this equipment. Uh we have a fleet of about thirty vehicles uh under DPW. Um and I guess if you want to think of it this way, you know, if you're gonna get, say, average of fifteen years out of any of all those vehicles, you know, you you need replacing two a year. Um so that that's kind of, you know, there's certainly there's a certainly a need to upgrade our our equipment. Any questions on those items?
No, I think the hot box is a great idea. Some of those roads, you'll spend less time trying to patch every little pothole when you can, you know, skimcoat it like you said. I I mean, yeah, I think that's a win-win for sure.
Yeah, that was the paving box, paving box, yep.
I'm sorry, paving box, yeah.
Does that work with the hot box? Is that like a tandem thing?
Uh no, it would uh um no, it would not. No, the the hot box can only hold maybe two uh two or three tons at a time. Um which is, you know, enough to do, uh you know, uh you know, maybe a ten by ten area. So the the paving box, you would have to bring in a hot mixed asphalt, uh buy it from a from an asphalt uh plant. Um and with their own truck and then we could we could use it, spread it that way.
And today, we wouldn't do that at all. We would just do the patching. And if for a larger paving job, we'd call in someone like a Crestview or someone to pave a section of road.
That is correct. Yes. All right, uh so next on my list is engineering. This is all of our MS for stormwater permit items. Um I wasn't going to go any detail in the line in the breakdown of items. Uh all I just want to note is that and we did this last year, there's a reallocation of funds. Um it may be uh confusing when you look at the budget sheets, but every year our our required tasks and the permit change. And uh our our line items in the budget are are fairly specific, whether it's um you know, for testing and sampling or for education or for training and stuff like that. So because our permit conditions change every year, there's a there's going to be a reallocation of funds uh to to uh to accommodate those required tasks. So yet there is a a I am asking for a little more money than we had last year, but you'll see in the budget requires that some items are going up, some items are going down in costs and some are not changing at all. So I just want to point that out to you that as you look to those budget sheets, that um uh there is a reallocation in those in those some of those items.
Randy, what's the net increase?
Uh I think it was about ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
I think we had about, yeah, I didn't print that one out front of me, unfortunately. Um next item in solid waste is refuse fees. Uh so there's actually a letter um before you tonight under your uh as as an action item talking about refuse fees. Um I'm looking to carry that same request over till next year. Um as I indicated in that letter, this basically post-COVID, the amount of trash that we have collected at our at our transfer station facility has increased pretty dramatically. Um I don't know if you shared with them that that chart I sent you last week, uh but you can see that.
I emailed it to them.
Yeah, you can see that uh basically um you know, January, February, and then, you know, March, you know, we're bringing in about hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty tons of trash a month, which is pretty average, one fifty to one sixty is is an average month, is is an average month. And then post-COVID, uh we have been uh upwards of uh one hundred eighty to two hundred tons every month. It's about a sixteen percent increase. And you know, first my thought was, well, now this, you know, this is probably a post-COVID or uh, you know, COVID spike. It's gonna it's gonna drop back down to normal. Uh but you when you look at this chart, it it really hasn't since uh COVID hit. And um it's surprising.
You'd think everybody'd be done cleaning out their basements by now.
I know, right? Uh
Yeah, it's going to be like that probably probably for the rest of the calendar year. That's going to be the first six months of fiscal year twenty two also.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we're counting for that in the budget if we can. So I did ask for a twenty five thousand dollar increase in the refuse fees line item. Um just uh, you know, to to expect that uh we're going to continue to see this increase in trash.
And then tonight, you're also going to vote to authorize a twenty five thousand dollar FinCom reserve transfer. So when you vote on that later, that's going to go to the finance committee who are meeting la- tomorrow evening.
All right, so uh the next two items I have on this list are for environmental monitoring and for landfill closure. So as you're probably aware, uh we have a uh a permit from NASTEP um uh which is a basically a post closure permit. So when the landfill, the brush landfill, the transfer station was closed uh in the late eighties, early nineties, it was never officially closed on paper. And uh NASTEP uh made note of that. And in the past year, um we have been uh working with them to formalize the closeout of that permit. And there were some conditions that came out of that uh process. Uh one is to do what's called environmental monitoring. So they're asking for uh four permanent groundwater melt groundwater monitoring wells uh established at the facility and uh samples taken once a year um to look for any type of uh contaminant that may be leaching out of the And uh samples taken once a year um to look for any type of uh contaminant that may be leaching out of the uh the old landfill. And then the second item that came out of that is a uh basically a a closure, a capping of that over the top of the landfill. Uh with a geotextile membrane uh over topped with uh four or six inch layer of some type of a hardened surface uh such as Millings. Um so and I think that uh certainly our guys can do some of that process, uh certainly with the landfill closure itself. Um I think our, we guys, we can do that with our labor. There will be some costs associated with it. Um and then the environmental monitoring, we're gonna have to hire a consultant to um uh work with us to uh monitor um those four, those four groundwater mills. So there are, so we do have a little bit of time to 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 take care of. Basically, we have two, two fiscal years to address these two items. Um the environmental monitoring piece uh is about a twenty thousand dollar effort. And the landfill closure is about a ten thousand dollar effort. So if we were to do all of that within one fiscal year, that's the request, that's the request I put in. Um and certainly if we need time, more time, uh and you want to extend one of these tasks or both of them to next year, uh certainly we can do that. We have time. Um but I did put the request in for this fiscal year uh to to address those items.
So that's thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand total, that's correct.
So if you end up getting a little less than that, you'll, you know, you'll be able to start the project.
Yes, absolutely, yep. Uh and then the next item is under the water department. Um this is a uh project to upgrade the transmission line from uh sprinkler water and sewers connection uh all the way to the new pump station on Jerry Drive. Uh this is an item that we pulled off the table last uh fiscal year or no, under last year, under during the budget process. Uh but the cost of a relining of that pipeline is about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um I did talk to some consultants about that. Uh that number is still good if we want to realign it. Um there has been some potential development in town that you're aware of and that development might be a pretty big water, water user. Um so what I have asked our consultant to do is to look into that project and to see if it's maybe worthwhile to either increase the size of that pipeline um as opposed to relining it. So I'm in the process of that right now. Uh I don't know the answer if that's gonna make a big difference or not. But certainly it's something that we should be looking into um in 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 coordination with this potential project coming on the pipeline. So that that number may change. Um I also want to point out that that is the total construction cost estimate that I have right now. We do have just shy of a hundred thousand dollars left in the original project uh that could be utilized for these, this this fund as well. So um that project was about a five million dollar project. We have a hundred thousand dollars left uh in that budget that we could also dedicate towards this use.
Randy, how many linear feet is that?
Uh it's about a mile and a half. I want to say about eight thousand, eight thousand feet.
From the, from that pump station, the new pump station to the transmission line?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right. It's a, it's yes. It's located um trying to think of a good land. You know where Gigi's is? Gigi's, the pizza shop in Westfield?
Yep.
It's it's located right, right at that, that
Right before there, it's right before there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the only big item for water. Uh and then for sewer, uh we do have a need for a new pickup truck for our sewer foreman. Um his truck is a two thousand and ten F one fifty. Uh that's basically uh his uh his workshop. Um the truck does have some issues repaired. We put some uh a few thousand dollars of repairs into it and there's some more that's pending. Um certainly, if we're gonna get a new truck for the sewer department, it should probably be a little bigger than it is now. Um like I said, that's, that's his, his workshop. He brings everything that he needs with him on that truck uh to the worksite. Um and he has limited space and capability in doing that. We'd probably also get a plow package so we can uh plow with that vehicle. He doesn't have the capability now with his truck. Um so uh the request is for a new one-ton pickup truck for the sewer department.
There's a nice one sitting behind the fire department. I bet you could put a plow on it. Just saying.
And and that's the my uh my uh, that's all on my list. So I apologize you didn't get that. Um but I can send this over to you, Carl, and uh you can pass it along.
Yep, no, we'll, we'll take it from me up. We'll use it. Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Now, while Randy is still here, do you, uh gentlemen, would you like to vote on those two DPW-related action?
So the first one is to uh reserve fund transfer. Is that the one you're talking about there?
Yep, and that's for the refuse fees. He's, he's, he's explained it well, so that's pretty uh pretty straightforward.
Randy, are you gonna take a look at that as far as the um uh when we get near closer to June and starting setting the rate at the transfer station? To, you know, and we, last year we went up on the permit a little bit and we're gonna have to take a look at that as we go. You know, versus how much we're carrying on the tax rate versus how much we're taking, taken from users, right?
Yeah.
It's always a good discussion to have.
Yeah, we do go through that process every year. Um you know, I I can say that, you know, our budget, you know, we've taken a fraction of what the expenses are at that facility. Um you could probably double the rates um that we ask for for transportation fees and probably still won't pay for all the costs that the facility um sees every year. So yeah, certainly, you know, with this increase, certainly worthwhile to look at that uh rate again.
Okay, well, we want, and we want to make sure that people are still using it, right? And and um you know, I know Russ has spoken on this issue many, many times. It's how important it is to keep that rate you know, relatively affordable so that we don't encourage people to do improper things with their trash and so on and so forth. So but we still want to push the recycling angle too, though. Um even though those, you know, those rates aren't as attractive as they used to be, it's still less expensive than hauling away his trash, so. Um any chance we get for a plug for that. So is there a motion to approve the request for reserve fund transfer, twenty-five thousand dollars for refuse fees?
Joe D D will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. And the second, Carl?
Is the MS four stormwater permit bylaw changes.
We didn't really talk about that tonight too much. There was a letter from Randy in our folder.
Yep, we, we got documents from him. It's in your action folder.
I I don't have a big issue with it. I I read it. It, did everybody get a chance to review it prior to this meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he was talking about this last year. This is not a new issue.
No, 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 I know that one. I was gonna get there. So yeah, I'm just a little slow on the uptake today, Carl. So yeah, I mean, this was something that they were gonna move out of a planning bylaw into a regular bylaw and then he'd have a handbook essentially that the bylaw would refer to, because that's gonna get updated from time to time more frequently than um a bylaw would. So I'd entertain a motion to uh let Randy start that process, at least. It's gonna take probably a year or more to get that done.
No, I don't think it'll take that long. I mean, I'm sorry to, I don't think it'll take that long, uh Doug. Um we're hoping to get this uh done and uh have it on town meeting this upcoming year.
Joe D D will make that motion.
Wow.
While it's hot, yeah.
There you go.
Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Now, which board member, Randy is asking for a meeting with a rep of the select board. Which board member would like to be the designate to address this issue?
I'm afraid, I'm afraid to look up at this point. Guys, I gotta be honest. I'm crying uncle. I I I can't take it right now.
I'm in, Doug. I'm in, I got you.
Joe's your guy. First man to move. Joe, you're the guy. You're a former planning board guy too. It's all yours.
How I'm doing, but what the hell. It's all good.
Any objection, Mr. Fox?
No, no, I, I thank the vice chairman for uh taking on that responsibility.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, between the uh some of the negotiation nonsense that's been going on and the, the other project and the, and the other project, it's, it's got me working pretty much full-time.
Understood.
I'll make it easy for you, Joe.
I'm not worried about it, to be quite honest. Let's just get it done this winter before I open up in April, that's all.
Uh can do.
Thank you.
Alright, Randy, you got anything else for us?
No, I appreciate your time as always, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your help so far on that other thing. And I'm, I'm hoping that's gonna have a good story.
Yep, same here.
Awesome. Alright, motion authorized chairman to sign federal fiscal year twenty M A D H C D C D B G contract. Carl?
That's our award of the HUD pass-through money. And we use those for housing rehabilitation. Um some of the work is going toward infrastructure design on some of the roads that are unaccepted that Randy's dealing with for drainage and improvements as well as funds for the food pantry. So you need to authorize the chair to sign this.
Joe D D will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Right of first refusal, sixty-one A Mortvining Road for Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders.
Yep, it's the balance of, uh you've done several sixty-one As for that parcel. And in the, in the interim, it's changed ownership. Now, uh let's see, you did twelve Form As a few weeks ago, and now this is the balance of the in the back.
Okay.
And it's about thirty-six acres. And again, no other board or committee or land trust or any entity has expressed interest in in bringing money into the picture to uh help um uh paid to uh match the refusal.
Okay, I need a motion to uh give up our right of first refusal on this parcel. At sixty-one A Mortvining Road.
Joe D D will make that motion.
Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. I'm gonna hold the next item for discussion under new business. Authorized chair to sign letter of support for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Trails Grant.
That's right. That's something that Dennis Clark and Jeff McCullough uh are working on a uh and it's to allow Pioneer Valley to uh work on a region-wide issue relating to different trails and obviously uh um the Conservation Commission and Mr. Pratt are interested in um, you know, jumping into this and it will necessitate the selectmen supporting it.
Can we also ensure that we involve or at least have them reach out to our local uh rail trail advocate for the Friends of the Rail Trail Group? Uh I think her name was Ms. Banish. To, to make sure that she's on board with all this as well and maybe she can provide some help as well.
And Park and Rec, right? Because they're really in charge of our trail.
And it's their park, yeah.
Yeah. I saw this a while back. I read it or was or accidentally came on a meeting with something to do with this and it, it looked, it looked, it looks like there's support regionally this time around to make it work. We're years past. The whole region wasn't really, I don't think the trail was done enough. Now with Westfield almost finished and and whatnot, it's a, a bigger scope. Looks good.
Okay, so did you uh vote to authorize the champ?
Joe D D will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Fox, aye.
Authorized chair to sign PVPC Contract Amendment Two for COVID-nineteen Nurse Services Grant.
Joe D D will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye. Russ.
Oh, Russ Fox, aye.
Getting near eight o'clock. Uh calendar year twenty-one. Lake Management Committee Boat Ramp Attendant Pay Rate Approval.
It's, it's the annual document that uh Mr. Grinnell's and his committee have met about and uh voted on and it will reflect compliance also with the uh state minimum wage laws as well as their differential and it comes from the boat ramp launch fees.
Wanna go to fifteen? Is that, is that, is that considered federal? Wanna go to fifteen, the new minimum wage or not?
Uh that is not, fifteen isn't even the state wage now. The state wage is
I know. So it's not federal, it's strictly state.
Yeah, this is state, right. The federal
I just wanna be sure.
If federal minimum wage is seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Well, by the time you're holding your breath, it won't be. There.
Someone want to second Joe's motion?
Uh I will second Mr. D D's motion.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe D D, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
It's all good, it's all
Legislative bills for Senator, oh, I need to circle back. So first under new business, we had a, and I want to come clean on this. We had a complaint made to the C A O, which was forwarded to me, which I took. And there was regarding certain messaging that was on the town crier sign last week, Wednesday. Or Thursday. Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, not Wednesday.
Right.
And it has always been the kind of unwritten policy of the town of Southwick that the town crier sign is an apolitical sign. It's not to be used for political purposes, much like the town hall itself, is not to be used for political purposes. You know, some boards and commissions and, you know, political um entities can meet there, but there's no fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Right? All the things under the law and spirit of the law are withheld, are, are adhered to very closely. And I think that's always been the case. Um I'll be honest, I had a, a bit of a disagreement with the, the complainant. Um in principle, I believe that, uh you know, on Wednesday, that's why I was being very clear about the date, Wednesday was the date that the, as an, as a country, we inaugurated a new president into office. So I would have zero objection that if it said, congratulations, President, whomever it is, on the twentieth of January, that that's an apolitical message, right? That's general nationalistic. It's like Happy July Fourth, right? It's inauguration day. The next day, however, it does become a political issue because it's no longer inauguration day and so it shouldn't have been there on the twenty-first. The issue was resolved expediently, but I think it does denote the need for us to have a basically a, a one-pager, that this is a policy for the town crier. I don't want to get to the point where, you know, people have to make a request to put something on the town crier that it's gotta go to the C A O or God help us, the Board of Selectmen for approval before it goes out there, right? But there should be a general framework of what is and what isn't acceptable. And I, since we're at it, I'd also like to put my own personal touch on it because it's been a thorn in my side for a few years now and I'll take some of the blame because the signed bylaw came in under my watch on the planning board is I would like to see the town come into substantial compliance with our own town sign bylaw, right? And that time, that sign should not have animation and graphics and fireworks, right? It should be an informational sign and it should change at a pace that is at least in accordance with what others are doing in town. So no more than, say, fifteen or twenty seconds per cycle. And I'd like to put codify that as part of the policy. I know the town is exact exempt from the policy and there is good reason why there would be times when you'd want to do that. But for ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they shouldn't, right? We shouldn't be, all the things that are in our bylaw that we put in to prevent, we're doing as a town on that town crier sign. And frankly, I'd like to see it stopped. And like to see the town basically not be in a position of you know, do as I say, not as I do. And how can we send the building inspector out to enforce our own sign bylaw in town when the town itself is just largely just ignoring the bylaw, even though it's exempt. So I'm saying that by this policy, I'd ask for your support to have that come in substantial compliance with the town bylaw.
Doug, you want, you want to, we can draft something that will um look like the zoning one too, so we could work with Alan on that?
I don't think it needs to be that complicated. I think it should be a one or, you know, it's a half a pager, right? With bullets, no political messaging, right? No animation, blah, blah, blah. That's at the time, the sign should not change any more often than whatever. And and you guys can pick a number, but the town bylaw is one, is it one minute? Joe, under the bylaw today, sixty seconds, I believe, is the bylaw today. Right? Perhaps, you know, and I get it, in a time of emergency, when we are trying to broadcast something important on that sign, good, all bets are off, do whatever you want, right? But for ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, when you're showing the time, the date and you know, when is the next Conservation Commission meeting, that doesn't need to roll by with scrolling and blinking, right?
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Alan about developing uh that wording and then putting in the apolitical stuff. um, that wording and then putting in the apolitical stuff, and then we can look at a draft and the.
Fantastic. So we'll carry that under old business.
Yes. On a side note, I'll stay out of this whole deal because I have one of those signs, and I'm one of those asses that was screwing around with it. Um, and and just because I'm such a great guy, the planning board has decided to bring up the sign bylaw, which you shall see shortly. And I believe we are going to look at how it's time more than just Joe Didi having a sign, hopefully. And we are gonna try to clean up all of our sins of the past. And I don't think it was a sin. We, Doug, me, and you were on the planning board. We had a great intentions with the sign bylaw. And unfortunately, I did by mine because one of the center of town was flashing like a S O B. And and just like you said, why, what, how's the town different than Joe Didi? I mean, I get it. So I'm glad to look at it. But I'm staying out of it because I'm sure I'm gonna cause trouble.
Joe, and I hope you didn't take it in the wrong way because I don't, you know, I believe like, you know, I've looked at, you know, I used the one at the Southwick Inn as a great example, right? They were a hundred percent in compliance with the bylaw. Except when we, once we had to tell them something and they were like, great. And now, you know, now it's down around three to four seconds, right? And it's still okay, right? I I get it. But the bylaw is still a minute. But how can I send the building inspector to go into the Southwick Inn? And and tell that nice young lady that she's got to come into compliance with the bylaw when she can see the town crier practically from the Southwick Inn with fireworks and graphics and all this other. Right? So I think we need to, the the planning board's gonna take a look at it from a common sense perspective. The 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 laws have changed on this around surrounding us. You know, in Westfield and elsewhere on how these are going, these signs are gonna proliferate proliferate more just because the cost is falling like a stone. Um, but I think the town should not. There's no reason for the town to exempt itself from its own bylaw in this case unless it was some kind of dire emergency that you needed to be flashing like, hey, seek shelter, right? Or something like that, right? Um, you know, hey, COVID vaccines today at town hall, you know, something like that. You know, to tell when the next parade is, it doesn't need to flash and have tractors running across the screen, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, I I'll get off my soapbox um, on that. Other new business here legislative bills for Senator and Representative to, oh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I thought under old business, we were going to discuss uh, sewer abatement policy.
I I have that in my notes.
Okay.
As well. And I'm sure that's why. Is that why Ms. Jacobs has her hand up? Or you could unmute.
I can take my hand down.
Okay. I I had that under. I have it as a note for tonight under old business, but I can do it now or you can do it later. It's up to you, Mr. Fox.
I just soon do it. Now, Mr. Chairman, so I mean,
She has been patient.
Ms. Jacobs has been very patient and she's interested. I told her that it's not it being the chairman's prerogative whether or not she could even speak, but she could at least listen to the discussion.
Okay. Well, I know I had a conversation with Ms. Jacobs. I think you did as well. Uh, maybe in others, we obviously we don't talk outside of a meeting for various reasons, but um, you know, one of the things that I wanted to bring up on a go forward basis is I think that and I unfortunately Randy left, but I think we should have some kind of, I understand the the discussion around the abatement request and why the abatement request was denied, and I voted to deny it as well. But I think that we should have some kind of process in place on a go forward basis for somebody that is going to be using a significant amount of water that may cause them to wanna request relief under the sewer abatement in the future because they're filling a swimming pool, they're whatever that activity is, to get that on note notice with D P W and give D P W the op at least the opportunity to view the activity and say, yeah, okay, that happened. Okay? And so I think the talk we used was slippery slope, I think, was we got hung up on, right? But um, you know, so someone says, hey, I'm gonna fill a swimming pool or whatever. Okay, great. D P W can or cannot at least drive by and see that there's a swimming pool being filled or is about to be filled and go, yeah, okay. And and the specter of D P W having the ability to come by because they're on notice should be enough to help with that type of situation. So I wanted to put that forth to as us as the sewer commissioners to say we should have that kind of mechanism, whether they call into D P W or call into the I don't know where they call into or file it under the on the website as a a web form to say, hey, I'm gonna request an abatement of X gallons because I'm going to take on this activity that this water is not gonna go down the sewer.
Chairman, the only thing I would suggest is that we we would have to work with the water commissioners and D P W director. Uh, you know, and put some thought into this. You know, because it is, you know, there is gonna be a question of time and who's going out to inspect things of that nature. And if it it falls to the water department, you know, they are funded by the water users and not by the Town of Southwick, so.
Same thing for, well, but I I was looking at because I believe this request that we had was for, it could be a water or sewer abatement policy, right? So some of it may be water. This was actually was, the sewer rates are a hundred percent based on water flow past the meter. Uh, except in a few rare instances where there's well and sewer, but so the question is, is this is water that's gonna get metered, but sewer that's not metered that we're not gonna have. So that the request for the abatement on the sewer side and us as sewer commissioners, I'm putting it to the sewer commissioners and 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 that staff. So I not meaning to split hairs, but that's the hair I'm splitting.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that since Russ has raised that issue and Joe took on the other assignment that you know, Russ could work with Randy on the development of that policy.
Well, I wasn't looking to throw Mr. Fox under that bus either, but.
Oh, yeah. No, he's taking the bus. He's taking the goddamn bus. I'm out of this deal. Nope, that can all go through Mr. Fox or Mr. Mogul. I had my ten minutes of fame. I went and talked to those goddamn people. I'm done. Next.
Is there, I mean, can I request just to say one thing?
You've been very patient and understanding, so absolutely.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Um, I I that was the main cause was me for me coming to this meeting was to make sure that something in the future was, you know, at least put into motion. Um, so that it's not an issue for, you know, the community down the line. Um, and I guess I I have said this to all three of you privately, but I I guess I now publicly want to definitely request that you guys reconsider that abatement for the simple fact that there is no other procedure in place. Um, had there been, I would have, you know, taken that so that the abatement would have been considered because I I feel like it wasn't even considered. And again, it's it's a small amount, um, but it it's the point that it was the only action I was able to take as a resident and water user to to fix that, you know, that wrongdoing. Again, I shouldn't be paying sewer rates on water that's going into a pool.
Well, I noted, and we'll bring it up for further discussion probably at our next meeting because it's getting kinda late here tonight, but.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I and I appreciate the time that you took speaking to me about this issue a month ago, and I've I've been carrying this around on my notes of things that I'm supposed to bring up, and we've just run out of time, frankly, just every every the last three meetings. So I apologize for not getting until now. And I was pretty sure when I saw you on the meeting tonight, I did have this note from two o'clock today, and I was pretty sure you weren't here for the dog hearing. So I appreciate you sticking with us all this time.
I hung out for the dog meeting. I've been here the whole time, so.
If anything will convince someone not to run for office, it's a dog hearing, let me tell you.
Yeah, I hear that.
Those things. Anyway, but thank you again.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so you want me to clean off the old business first that before we move to the new business, Mr. Fox?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, as far we 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 covered green energy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, on the regional dispatch, um, it's my understanding from where I sit that the here's what here's what I did, and then I'll let Carl chime in. So I do know that the I've conferred with the Chair of the Finance Committee. I could chair I conferred with one liaison from the Fire Department. Uh, Finance Committee Liaison to Fire. And they are, their liaisons are meeting with their respective departments today.
Tomorrow.
And tomorrow. And I have asked the Fire Chief and the Police Chief to prepare a presentation to a joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen for next Monday with their review and recommendation as they see it so far um, in regards to it's further exploring the regional dispatch with Westcom. So that's as much as I know, and now you know as much as I know. Um, I did ask, I sent them a fairly lengthy email. You know, this can't be a very disjointed back and forth thing. They need to put together what they're thinking as the joint owners of the dispatch as to what they see the direction of dispatch for our town. You know, what the resources it would need to be committed if we continue down the current path that we're on, or if we were to engage on a regional basis, what what that looks like. And it's it's not, and and I want them to present to this board and to the Finance Committee the fact if there's any other facts to this thing that are not just strictly money, right? Because I think this got characterized that, oh, this is just to save five dollars or ten dollars. This, I don't believe that this is entirely monetary, right? There are technical issues and and other issues that are coming to head with E M D and others that are going to drive this discussion. If not now, in the in the very near future. So I've asked those guys to come back as the professionals to present that to this, these two boards as a joint meeting next week.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. This is a discussion about them evaluating the needed service levels. Um, and they have, they have the previous studies that have been done by two outside entities discussing uh, the dispatch configuration and improvements that were needed. So they're not just looking at it like right now, you know, what it is right now with the auctions and then having to replace equipment, but what the service level needs to be with additional people for call dispatchers and call takers and the equipment and all those other benefits. And then there's the third option of the other entity as a regional, um, you know, alternative.
Or take any other action there too, as they say at the town meeting, right? So.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear it from them and see where they're, you know, where we're going. And what.
They've been working on it, and they've been, look at any question that's been raised by people with them. The police and fire chiefs have been off asking answers to those questions and researching those issues.
Correct.
So they can keep this, you know, as a fairly objective discussion.
Thoughts or concerns or questions for from Joe or Russ?
I I agree. I don't I don't think it's ever gonna be a financial savings. That's not what this was about. It's part of it, but that's really not it. And yeah, great, good idea. Let's have those guys come back with real answers or what they think are the real answers, and we'll move forward. There was never a decision for us three. It was more of a group effort anyway, so.
Well, and the other thing is that even if you make a decision in a week or two, the decision is just to say that you're still willing to consider it. And the entity of Westcom would then file a letter of intent from you as part of a grant package to see what what would it take from the E nine one one board to allow Southwick as well as maybe other communities to join it.
Understood.
So then even the next decision made is still not a final decision.
Correct.
Just to go to the next step. And I think that's something that, you know, the Finance Committee is always charged with evaluating the different issues that relate to finances as well as your concerns on service levels.
Okay, and then the road change, Southwick Hill to Iron Horse Lane, that's.
Something, yep, that's Kevin is working that out with Town Council.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other old business, gentlemen? Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Okay. New business legislative bills for Senator and Representative to file for Southwick.
Yes, the state rep and the state senator are gonna be appearing before you at your next meeting. So they're gonna wanna have an idea from you, the types of legislative initiatives or bills that you would like them to be pursuing and filing.
Do we have to wear a suit?
A collared shirt, Joe. That's it.
All right.
So I know obviously where we are in the evening, you know, you're not, you're not really up for this discussion now, but obviously the board in the past, the the important things for the board has always been infrastructure, infrastructure and so forth. And then, you know, maybe there could be some improvements. They could help make in municipal buildings and things like that, so.
Correct.
Roads, bridges, culverts, that's always been the mainstay of the board.
With informal discussions I've had with our legislative delegation, they weren't too optimistic about monies for roads. But we were fortunate enough to get monies for equipment in the past. Um, and we see that big list that Randy gave us tonight. That might be one consideration. Uh, another minor consideration after the MMA, uh, the one on what we can do for businesses uh, might be to pursue again additional uh, monies through tourism uh, that would help with such things as banners for our new fifty brackets, uh, additional lighting that some communities are doing in the downtown areas. And maybe some additional help for our Economic Development Commission. Those are a couple of the things that I I'm just throwing out there. But I like your idea about a roof to to preserve our town hall too.
And I I I couldn't, I'll third that. I mean, it's one of the discussions I I informally had around that that topic. Um, vis a vis some other large expenditures that were made um, in town that arguably could have been more state responsibility um, that the town embarked on and um, you know, perhaps that there's a way to kind of even up the tally in that in that that space, right?
Well, that's good.
We spent a ton of money on the uh, the the lake treatment, right? On a great on a great pond. And um, you know, that's probably something that should get some due consideration if if we were to come back and say, hey, we're, we know it's 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 unlikely nigh impossible for someone to reimburse an expense that was incurred like that. But keep that in mind as we cooperate together moving forward, right? So um, you know, a project of substance that might be able to see see some money might be a great idea to help out with that. So I that's that's my take on it, and I think we should further that. And the other piece is as we continue down this path with um, you know, if there's potential, say, economic development activity in town, you know, to really work with the delegation to coordinate different state agencies with different funding mechanisms that are gonna enable, potentially enable those types of economic development activities, that kind of coordination is gonna be critical, right? The money's there. It's just getting everybody in the room for permitting and 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 dollars and so on and so forth, and it may come down to that. So I'd love to see that. You know, us work together on those types of things as well.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, especially as it aligns with job creation.
Correct, especially coming out of a pandemic and, you know, significant unemployment in our town and the surrounding area, but mostly our town.
Okay.
Anything else tonight?
Uh, just the other thing to bear in mind, obviously, I I, you know, and I saw Joe looking at this earlier, the the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's doing that tip improvement plan, so you know, we we have a project on there that really relates to the state doing the north part of College Highway. But at some point, the board may wanna start allocating dollars toward design and permitting for the other improvements to finish the other sections of Feeding Hills Road.
Yeah, and that north part, like we talked about, that's right where they wanna do that water line too. So that's, you know, it's interesting, right? Well, I don't know when we're gonna try to get that water line taken care of. But I don't know, once they grind and pave that area, are we allowed to dig it back up?
Um, I, 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 you know, I think with your um, that's not going to happen that fast. And I think your input and Randy's coordination on that other stuff is that they certainly would have no problem delaying it a year if it meant we needed to do certain things to undertake the um uh, the installation of a replacement water line below that ground or a relined one, depending upon what that engineer determines is the best approach route on that. So, but I, what I'm referring to here is the Kong, the Feeding Hills Road.
Oh, I understand. I know. I hear you.
So, so at some point, you know, do, are you willing to start putting dollars toward that design and permitting for the, the areas that need to be done from the, the uh um, the Agawam line all the way to um College Highway minus the segment that was just taken care of in the last few years.
So this would go from Powder Mill to College Highway pretty much?
Yeah, well, it might also go, yeah, Powder Mill. No, it actually would also go from maybe Pioneer Dairy to the, to the line too.
Yeah.
That they just resurfaced, they didn't redo, right?
Right.
Oh, there's, needs to be redone again. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there are some other segments, so, and it, they have to be designed properly, but so I think Randy is going to be coming back with Dick to revisit that issue with you to see if you want to put some design dollars there because you were mostly monopolized with design dollars for culverts. You know, that are in small areas that are only a few hundred feet long with some paving. This is for a main numbered route that you're responsible for.
The only, the only concern that I would have at this time is right now, we're, we're still in at odds with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on Congammon Road. And, and the cost of that boondoggle down there. And now you're talking about another complete roads project on, on 57 that will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in design and wouldn't take place probably, I don't know, five years, 10 years? Uh, when we have roads that are falling apart. Um, I, I think we got to give this a lot of thought before we go down this road.
And I think that might even be something like a especially up at the Pioneer Dairy, when that site finally gets their act together as far as what that site's going to look like in 10 years, there might be some traffic improvement or traffic design issues at North Long Yard too that might come into play, right? Because right now that site's just very underutilized and something's got to give there eventually on that corner. Either they're going to sell it or redevelop it or do something. And I think that's going to drive a little bit of what's going to happen through that intersection at North Long Yard. Um, and 57. And then the other part is the design of 57, just the short section from Powder Mill to the center. Um, I don't think they have that designed done, but that also needed, that was part of the, on their plan a couple of years ago. It's not on here now, it's not on the tip, but it was part of their plan as well. And then the other is, was the extension of, and this may come clearer over the coming years, but the end of the sand pit is nigh on, off Hudson. And I think this would be the opportune time to look at connecting Hudson down to either Sam West or Tannery um as a bypass to keep, to take some of the traffic off 57 and off 10 and 202 in that corridor as that gets busier and busier. Truck traffic in and out of Westfield that is coming to the industrial park as that industrial park builds out, for example. So that's probably something, I don't know if that's something to talk with the planning board or Pioneer Valley or somebody, but that's something that they probably should be looking at as far as the, because the redevelopment of that, the rest of that industrial park as Lane and Tilcon check out, that's going to be developable land and how you bring Hudson Drive further down is something to look at. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Wow, we made this into a two and a half hour meeting and we do not have executive session tonight?
Yes, we do. We have Attorney Dupre has been on the line for the last three.
Wonderful.
Fantastic, because that's been so productive.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to mass general law, chapter 30A, section 21, sections two and three, chapter 214, section 1B and CMR 20 dot O three, 1B. Regarding DPW clerical police library dispatch units and non-union executive session, uh, police DPW clerics dispatch unions, department heads and, and non-union staff move to go into executive session to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene an open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not reconvene an open session. And per chapter 214, section 1B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages. Doug Mowgli, I.
Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.